All right, welcome everyone. I call the September 8th, 2020, regular city council meeting to order. Before we move on to the agenda item, I'd like to acknowledge our remote meeting format. Proclamation 20-28 regarding open public meetings was extended through October 1st. Therefore, this meeting will be held entirely remotely. Public comment will be allowed both in writing or verbally. Sign up sheets were provided by the city clerk office via link from the agenda. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting. If you have called in, we ask that you mute your device so as not to interfere with this meeting. If a participant fails to mute their connection and causes a disruption to the meeting, the connection will be terminated. For our calling callers during staff presentation, staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so everyone can follow along. Those who provided an advance notice are able to make comments under the visitor comment portion of the meeting. At this moment, we'll take a moment to take roll call of the council members by position.
Please state your name when I, please state here or if, when I call your name. Mayor Zornz?
Here.
Councilmember Thompson? Councilmember Thompson, thank you. Councilmember McNeil?
Here.
Mayor Olson?
Here.
Councilmember Door?
Here.
Councilmember Agnew?
Here.
And, thank you, and Councilmember McCullough will not be in attendance this evening, so we have six out of seven tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. So last, before I begin, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Mute your microphone when not speaking. Also, if you're streaming live video feed, the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. If you want to speak, please indicate this by holding up your yellow card, speaker card, in the lower portion of your screen. I'll call as you as I see them. This will help avoid the problem of two people, two people speaking at the same time. Before we get started, I'd just like to take a moment of silence for all the tragedy that we're experiencing in our state with the wildfires. We have some of our firefighters, I understand, helping outside of our region, so we appreciate their hard work, and I'd like to take a moment of silence. Thank you for that indulgence. Councilmember Agnew, did you want to speak at all? I know you.
No, I, I thank you for that privilege. We, we just have to try to help our fellow Washingtonians out right here at this time. We, I, I've never seen this many wildland structure, or wildland fires on the west side of the state. You know, they're fairly commonplace on the east side, but not the west side. So it's, it's been an interesting year to say, say the least. You know, I, I just, I hope that all of our firefighters and the firefighters that are out there are safe. We've lost a few during these times. And that we can decrease the amount of property damage that we can possibly decrease. So, thank you for that, a moment of silence.
All right, the first item on the agenda is meeting agenda approval. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? All right, seeing none. Council committee reports. Is there anyone that wishes to indicate a committee or has a committee report they'd like to share? All right, on the visitor comment. City clerk, do we have?
Thank you, yes, we did. We received one written comment from Julie Rodwell, and that was in regards to the Lot D project that was forwarded to council earlier this afternoon. And she was very thankful to staff regarding the Lot D. That's, that's the only one we received.
All right, thank you. Uh, so, on to our next item, the consent agenda. Nothing was pulled, so I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Doer?
And will we approve the consent agenda?
Councilmember Agnew?
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Council Doer to approve the consent agenda, and a second by Councilmember Agnew. Any discussion on the item? All right, seeing none, city clerk?
Please say yea your name when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yea.
Councilmember Thompson? Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember Door?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
Pass the 6-0 with Councilmember McCullough, absent.
All right, thank you. So on to our next item, a public hearing, AB 20-111. So it's a public hearing in consideration of ordinance amending the BN C chapters 12.07 Affordable Housing, 12.16 Parking, and 12.64 Downtown Subarea Regulations, Providing for Reduced Parking Requirements Near Frequent Transit and Affordable Housing Incentives. So I'll, I'll now open the public hearing. And we have Community Development Director Michael Kaderman.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just do a quick introduction, and then Senior Planner Dave Boyd will do a presentation for council. This item this evening actually covers two topics that are on the docket this year. One having to do with facilitating the development of parcel A, city-owned parcel for affordable housing. And the other related to complying with state law that required cities to reduce certain parking requirements in areas that are served by frequent transit. In addition to Dave Boyd this evening, we also have our vice chair from the Planning Commission, Carsten Kerd. If the council has any questions of the Planning Commission. And on standby, if we want to get into any of the details about the affordable housing, we also have Mike Stanger with Arch. With that, I'll turn it over to Dave to do the presentation.
Thank you and good evening. I'm going to go straight to my presentation. I'll share my screen. Can you see that? Okay. So as Director Kaderman said, we're looking at limited parking reduction and affordable housing incentive code amendments tonight. The background, recent state law limits parking minimums for some residential uses near frequent transit stops. So we're addressing that. The downtown planned action EIS height analysis allows additional height in some zones. So we're without additional environmental study, as explained in more detail in the agenda bill. So we are taking advantage of that. And the fact that the housing strategy identifies both height bonuses and parking reductions as tools that can be used, can and should be used to promote affordable housing in, in Bothell. I do want to recognize two exhibits that were received since the Planning Commission recommendation, which had two exhibits. So Exhibit 3 would be the email from Pat Pierce that council received. And Exhibit 4 would be an email from Brian Masick, Metro, accompanied by a letter from Metro that is rather broad, but the, the email cover that came in today specifically identified these code amendments, the parking reductions near frequent transit as an item that they, the Metro wanted to support. So a little background, these were initiated in the 2020 docket, in part to facilitate the development on Block A shown here. That parcel is under contract to affordable housing developer Imagine Housing. And they are proposing a 7, 76 units of low and very low income senior housing units with 38 parking spaces. And they have had a pre-app, and they are anticipating, they, they need these code amendments in order to get some state grants to make this project possible. And, and they need that, those grants go in this month. And, and then they plan to apply for, start the permitting in early next year. State law now limits, following two house bills passed over the last couple of years, they limit minimum parking requirements within a quarter mile of frequent transit stops in three different cases. And for low and very low income housing, for senior and disabled housing. And also added this year was a reduction for market rate housing near frequent transit. Each of these different cases has slightly different transit frequency requirements. So the map on the screen here shows the original criteria was that frequent transit was identified as having four stops per hour for 12 out, continuous hours a day. So the orange dots are where that occurs. And then the pink shading are quarter mile buffers around those, those frequent transit stops. The revisions that they made this year increased the, the frequency for market rate housing to four stops per hour from one line as opposed to multiple lines. And reduce the frequency for affordable housing to two stops per hour for 12 hours, continuous hours a day. So some considerations that Planning Commission and staff took in, and, and in our approach to this. Since transit service changes over time, it seemed appropriate not to try to map out where, exactly where this would happen, but to provide this as an exception in our code that an applicant can apply for if they are within, within the parameters of the, of the allowed parking reductions. The state law also has some provisions that, that recognize site-specific conditions like, including availability of on-street parking, parking. So we've, I, I taken that into consider, consideration in the code amendments. The, and as I said, we're, we're doing this through exceptions to our parking requirements, leaving certain current transit-related exceptions as they are. We didn't want to take away anything that already exists in the, in the current code. And then we are allowing, we've structured this in a way that allows reductions to at least one space per bedroom as stated in, in state law. Or with a parking study to justify it, 2.75 spaces per unit, which the state law also allows. So the, the state, the reason for the two different rules has been stated as giving jurisdictions some, some flexibility and the option of, of adopting either of those. And we thought it was appropriate to allow by right the reduction to one space per bedroom, but to allow the, the further reduction through a parking study. In most of downtown, the code already is at one space per bedroom. So that further reduction would only come into play if it can be justified through a parking study. So in summary, the new parking exceptions are, will be added onto our existing ones, and they will apply citywide and as transit service evolves. For senior housing, we, the recommendation is to establish a minimum based on the expected staffing and guest levels. State law doesn't allow a requirement for the actual senior or disabled housing, but it does allow jurisdictions to establish a requirement based on staff and guests. We have used a quarter and half mile radii for simplicity and, and to provide a slightly broader extent than the alternate approach would be to use walking distance, also known as walk sheds. And we are, staff is proposing in a, in a modification to the Planning Commission recommendation that the market rate parking reductions be limited to half mile and to one space per bedroom, so that we can take the time to study the potential for adding affordable housing requirements for a development that takes advantage of this exception, for a market rate development that takes advantage of this exception. This is something that came up after the Planning Commission recommendations in consultation with, with Arch. Our comprehensive plan states that whenever we increase development capacity, we should consider the possibility of adding affordable housing provisions, requirements to, to the code. And we feel that this is an opportunity to do that, that we shouldn't, we shouldn't just give up this, this additional capacity which a parking reduction essentially provides without getting some percentage of affordable housing in return. So that's going to take a little more analysis and study, but we wanted to move forward with these code amendments to meet the Imagine Housing schedule for, for the Lot A development. In terms of the affordable housing incentive, the downtown planned action environmental impact statement studied for, within the downtown transition SR522 corridor and the general downtown corridor, a height limit of four floors and 54 feet. And the aesthetic impacts analysis that was done was based on that height. It also sets thresholds for capacity. So our, we feel that the planned action EIS allows us to provide for a height up to 54 feet. And through a voluntary affordable housing incentive to allow developments that meet certain requirements, fairly stringent requirements, to add an additional floor within that 54 feet. And Imagine Bothell is able to get a fifth floor within that height limit, which was again studied in the EIS. And that allows them to provide a more competitive project for the state grants that they need to, to complete this project. The recommendation is to apply this just to the SR522 corridor areas that don't have the affordable housing area. So the areas in purple on the map here, but not the ones with the, the black crosshatching, purple with black crosshatching. To give a closer look at that, those areas, this map shows those areas along the south and east side of SR522 as it moves through town with the small area just past Casner Way on, on the north side of 522. The proposal applies to all units. So where we've applied affordable housing requirements, when we've increased capacity, we've limited that requirement to typically to 10% of the units in a, in a project. Since this is a voluntary incentive, and it will likely only be used by affordable housing developers that are going to be doing all of their units as affordable housing units, we thought it was appropriate to, to make this apply to all units. And it also gives us the opportunity to set affordability levels to meet lower income ranges than we can do with the affordable housing requirements in the overlays. So we, the affordable, affordability level that we set here was an average of 50% of the area median income. And that was chosen to meet the guidelines in state funding that in order to get the maximum points for a project, they have to either average around 50% of area median income or, or be all at that level. So this gives applicants some flexibility on how they structure their, their project, but still gets us to those lower affordability levels. As we were doing this, in order to comply with the state, the new state regulations have their, have updated their definitions for affordability levels. So we did, the, the code amendments do include some changes to the terminology used in the affordable housing overlays, without changing any, any substantively, any, any of the requirements there. So with that, I will open it up for questions before council takes any, opens the public hearing and takes any public testimony and moves on to deliberations and a motion and vote to approve the proposed action with any amendments desired by council. Thank you, any questions?
Dave, could you share your screen?
Yes.
All right, who had the cards up? Councilmember Doer?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. Dave, I had a couple of questions here. So it sounds like we're not increasing the overall height of the building. We're just allowing an additional floor, is that correct?
The current height limit in that part of the zone is, is 44, four floors and 45 feet. So we are allowing the height to go up to the height that was studied in the downtown plan EIS. And then also allowing one extra floor.
Okay, sorry, I misunderstood when, when you were describing it. Was there any discussion about going up to six? Because I know with this typical type of construction, six is kind of the max. Was there any discussion about that, or did the developer not ask for it so that wasn't discussed?
They didn't ask for it, and it also wasn't discussed because that would have required us to do some supplemental, supplemental EIS. We couldn't have relied on the planned action EIS that already studied the 55, four foot.
Okay, I see. And do we know yet? Currently, the 522 BRT, is it still planned for 2025? And is, do we know if that is still likely or unlikely to change? Do we know when Sound Transit will make their determinations on changing schedules and projects?
I don't know when, they might change the schedule, but they are still moving forward for the new extended deadline, as you've mentioned. And in fact, we're reviewing the 10% plans. We were reviewing the 10% plans earlier today, so, so it is moving forward.
Okay, and, and then I assume we don't know yet where there might, where they might put a transit stop. But we, we, are we assuming that a transit stop will be within a quarter mile of the, that building? Do we know? Is there any way to know?
We are relatively certain of that. The, the, the transit stop closest to this will be near the libraries. That's certainly well within a quarter mile. And then there will continue to be other transit or bus stops that will stop in between the BRT stops. And some of those currently meet the, the level of service to, to apply this code. And, and we anticipate that some of them will, will continue to do that. So we can't know exactly what the, the overall, where, where all this will apply, but we're relatively certain that it will apply on this side.
Great, and then regarding the study, could you clarify? So the, the study is to see, I'm really on, I guess I really didn't understand what the study was meant to do and what you're looking for. I understood that something to do with incentivizing affordable housing, but could you explain more?
Well, the, what we're proposing tonight is voluntary incentive that, that doesn't require any additional study. What we, what we are recommending that we hold off on is expanding the area that these parking reductions would apply to market rate housing, so that we can do a study and determine whether we can do that and get some affordable housing, a, a percentage of affordable housing in those projects. We're sticking with the, sort of the minimum state mandate of allowing within a quarter mile reductions down to one space per bedroom, which as I said, in downtown won't really have an effect. In other areas of the city, it could, if other areas of the city get sufficient transit service to allow that. So Arch does an analysis of the benefit to the developer of the, either increased height or, or reduced parking requirement, and does a calculation to, to do a, a trade-off between the benefit to the developer and the benefit to the public of potential affordable housing requirements. And that, that takes a fair amount of analysis, and just wasn't possible to do in the timeframe of this amendment.
Councilmember Doer, were you asking about the parking study as, as well? Or were you asking about the affordable housing?
I was asking about the affordable housing, but now that you mention it, I'd love to hear about the parking study.
Sorry to interrupt, I thought I, thought you were asking about the parking study. I want to make sure that we address that as well. Go ahead, Dave.
So the, the parking study that the developer would do to, to qualify for these reductions below one space per bedroom would, are fairly common. Many jurisdictions already do these. When I asked Imagine Bothell if they were intending to, to do a parking study, they, they, they were, and they had already budgeted for it. So, and, and basically what it does is, especially with an established developer like Imagine Bothell, they can use their own projects and say, in, in these other jurisdictions, we developed, did projects very similar to this. And the utilization was X. And in this case, there, for this type of senior housing, which is not only senior housing, but low-income senior housing, the, their experience has been that they've needed less than about a third of a space per unit typically.
So, piggyback a little bit on that, pardon me. So just to clarify for the record, Dave is referring to Imagine Housing. He's very well-trained to Imagine Bothell, which is our comprehensive plan.
I knew what he meant.
I'm trying to make sure the record was clear. I'm trying to make sure the record was clear on that. But I also wanted to mention that I think this approach is actually a very practical approach because we don't have to then go back and amend and constantly evaluate whether the transit service is increasing or decreasing in a certain area. We rely on that in real time when the development comes in and the study that's done by the developer to determine whether or not it meets the requirements under state law. And I just think it's a, it's a very practical approach and saves us a lot of extra staff time in the long run. I just thought that was worth mentioning.
So if council wants to move ahead with this affordable housing study, what action do we need to take in terms of making motions and whatnot for?
Well, I think in terms of, I don't think that there's a specific motion at this point. I think it's, there are two actions. One is if the council goes with the staff recommendation, then that's the first signal that that is something you want us to take a look at. And then we can put that into the docket for 2021 when we bring that to you. I did have a conversation a little earlier today with Mike Stanger from Arch just to get a sense of what might be involved to do that. I was hoping it might be more of a quick, yeah, we can take a look at it and determine whether or not it's really worth the effort. You know, that it may pick up a substantial number, significant number of affordable units. And what Mike explained to me, and it makes sense as I thought more about it, it's really difficult to say how much effort would be involved. Because if, if you think about that map that Dave showed just a little bit ago that showed the quarter mile radii, we're expanding that to a half mile for market rate if we go with the planning commission recommendation, which means we're increasing the area substantially. And Mike would need to look at all of those to see what development potential existed in those areas. So it could take a little bit of time to do all of that. Plus the fact that over time, we will be adding more area presumably as our transit service improves. So if we do, if we don't, okay, let me start this again. If, if the council goes with the planning commission recommendation to go to the half mile for market rate and that's the only difference between the staff and the planning commission, that's an opportunity that we would be giving away permanently. We would not be able to go back later and add an affordable housing requirement in those areas where we've already allowed that reduced parking.
Okay. And I didn't see the, or anything that would tell me what the planning commission's thought process was on that? Is there anything on the record that would tell us what their thought process was?
I think we would defer to Vice Chair Kerd to maybe provide that input.
Hi, sure. So we had deliberations for about a month before the August recess about the amendments before you tonight. And two of the main considerations that Planning Commission came to was these competing values of flexibility in our code versus the consistency. And so the reason why there's a variation between Planning Commission and staff is that there's these two competing values and both of them are really good in and of themselves. Consistency with other jurisdictions and with the definitions from the PSRC and county agencies on reductions within half a mile from frequent transit was the main divergence. Planning Commission felt that consistency with the other jurisdictions was more applicable to make sure that the development was on par with our neighbors. The other thing was that the commission feels that it's critical to support affordability and effective land use within broader areas of the community just to not concentrate affordable and senior housing along arterials. And so right now Bothell's parking code is pretty stringent and parking can cost $50,000 or more per stall. It competes for limited space with new and existing development. And we've collectively invested millions of dollars into transit, building a walkable and dense community. That's already going to be attractive to development and is cost effective to operate in the long run. So that other competing interest that I talked about was flexibility. Our city varies spatially in sidewalk presence, quality and parking availability. So the flexibility component was solved with requiring this parking study to be done on all of the, just to get into those deeper parking reductions because the parking studies would reflect the actual conditions on the site and right size the parking for the development. That was pretty much the process that Planning Commission went through. The July 1st and 22nd meetings were the ones, and they're online for more discussion.
Great. Thank you so much. That's really helpful. I appreciate it.
If I could add one thing to that. The proposal that staff brought to Planning Commission at that public hearing on July 22nd was for quarter mile radii. There was obvious interest in Planning Commission and beyond that. And we didn't think on our feet quite fast enough to raise this issue of the possibility of requiring some affordable housing with the larger radius for the market rate housing. So they didn't, we didn't have this discussion with Planning Commission really. And, but we did think it was worth bringing it to council.
Great. Thank you.
All right, who's next? Councilmember Thompson.
Mayor Olson, I didn't have my yellow thing, but I had this mask and I thought that might do. So it seems like in terms of the differing opinions or differing proposals between the planning commission and staff, really the only difference is that staff would like to come back in the 2021 docket and say, we like this idea, we just want to make sure we know that we're going to get affordable housing on. Is that the case? Is that the only thing? Is there something I'm missing?
Well, and it's not just that we know that we're getting affordable housing, but that we, that we take advantage of the opportunity to get affordable housing.
I will say that like it's so rare to have two people with competing goals who both sound so reasonable. I really appreciate the planning commission's recommendation and I also really appreciate what you and Mike and the crew are talking about as well. I would very much support moving forward. My only just question, when are we going to have time to talk about this in the future after we do that study? That sounds like a really good idea.
And I would just add, I don't see these as competing goals so much as complementary goals. The question is really one of timing and whether we wanted to do something now when we have the opportunity versus moving forward with the half mile at this point.
For all the reasons you already know that I could go into, I would like to see this extended to a half mile, but I'd also really love to see just affordable housing be used as an incentive for that too. I would enthusiastically go with the staff recommendation tonight. Especially if we can get the staff on the docket on 21 and it's not going to be years or some day in the future when it might happen. If there's a constant timeline to that, I would be enthusiastic about that.
I think that really is council's direction on how high a priority you would like to make this in the 2021 docket. We do have, we and Arch have our hands full with finishing off the 2020 docket items and particularly affordable housing items in Canyon Park and multifamily tax exemptions. But if this is a high priority for council, I think we can focus on it fairly soon in 2021.
Do we know what kind of a time cost this is? Is this an enormous ask or is this something that we can add without it being too disruptive?
Well, that's again, just based on a brief conversation I had with Mike Stanger earlier today, it's really hard to say at this point what all would be involved in that. But that's, we'd have a more thorough conversation and we'd have better information for you when we bring you the docket.
Okay, perfect. And then we can vote on when we want to do it then. Because all of the reasons why this bill passed in the first place is better for climate, better for housing affordability, better for our own budget, like those are all really good things and I would like to have those in more areas. And if we could get affordable housing on top of it guaranteed, then I'd like that. And that's all I've got.
All right, our next council member person is? There we go. Deputy Mayor Zorn.
Well, I'm still putting my thoughts together here, so it may be a little scattered here. The reduced parking, if we're talking about multifamily and it's mixed market and reduced and affordable housing, does the reduced parking just apply to the affordable housing piece? Or is that for the whole building?
Excuse me. So the statute specifically identifies the parking requirement for the affordable units in that section or for senior and disabled housing in that section. So it would apply to those units.
Okay, all right. That helps. Thank you. Okay, so now I've got, I've got some more questions to ask.
Just to add one thing to that though, and Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, there is the third category of the market rate house. So it would allow for a reduction in parking for market rate housing as well.
In the third category?
That's, that's correct.
Oh, okay. That's within a quarter mile of their transit stop?
Right.
I saw the tight zone and I understood during the presentation, it sounded like it was for all of downtown. Is it just for adding height along 522? Or is it for all of the general downtown corridor?
The quarter mile buffer around frequent transit stops covers most of the downtown suburb area. So not just 522, but there's bus service along currently and planned to be even more in the future along 185th and to the north. So it does extend and up to Beardsley. Obviously, the campus stations provide that level of service. So it's a pretty broad area.
I believe the question was about the additional height.
Right, the addition.
Oh, I'm sorry. That would only apply to the SR 522 corridor district that already have the affordable housing overlay. So basically along the east and south side of 522 and then a little bit on the north side over past Kaster.
Okay, that little teeny, that little teeny strip?
Yes.
Okay. But this doesn't remove any existing overlays that sit in the rest of downtown? I'm talking about where overlays have been put in place next to single family homes?
No, doesn't affect the height overlays.
Okay. That's good because I was going to say, community is going to need more time to weigh in on that. So questions on page 30 of the agenda packet. It's in 12.07.030, subpoint A. It says that adjacent developments by the same developer will be considered as a single development for the purpose of applying a threshold compliance. Can you tell me more about that?
Sorry, can you type the page number again?
Sorry, it's page 30 of the agenda packet or page 10 of just this bill. It's a general affordable housing requirements, point one, subpoint one under A that says adjacent developments by the same developer will be considered a single development for the purpose of applying threshold compliance.
Yeah. So that was just to prevent a developer to do two five unit or two four unit developments instead of an eight unit development to avoid the threshold. We would, we would look at the overall development that was being proposed.
Okay. That was good thinking. Whoever thought of that, that was good thinking. And then on the next page, I was, this is a point of curiosity for me. You were taught, there's the sizing for affordable units of 500 square feet per studio union unit, 600 square feet for one bedroom unit. How did you come across, come up with those numbers? How is that, how were those numbers derived?
Those are part of the existing affordable housing section of our code and that which was drafted largely by Arch and reviewed by Planning Commission.
True.
So it was, and the purpose is to assure that the affordable units, that they're just not making them unreasonably small, that they, that they still are livable units for the number of bedrooms that they have.
Okay, so here's, here's another question because, because you know, when you talk about floor space with affordable units, you're getting more people in them in theory, right? Do you plan, when you know a unit is going to be more population dense, do you, do you plan those being closer to emergency exits? Or is that, or are there enough emergency exits distributed through a building that you?
We're getting into building fire code now. Let me see if I can, if I can address that with my limited knowledge of the building code.
Okay.
First of all, we don't regulate the number of people in units. That may be something that is reviewed as part of the management of the property based on number of bedrooms. They may have certain restrictions they place on that or may have to do with income eligibility. There may be other restrictions. But as a city, we don't regulate the number of people in a unit.
Okay. And you don't really worry about placement of those units?
Code though, as we look at the number of bedrooms and the number of, we have occupants considered. So the, those exits and acts are part of the review. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
You're breaking up a little bit on my end. I don't know if that's.
There, I didn't, I didn't hear your question.
I think, I, I think my impression of what you were saying is that it's more of, the fire gets in there and it weighs in on how that's, how things are laid out as far as emergency exits.
I think that's right. We rely on the building code and the fire code to address those kinds of issues that you raised, Deputy Mayor.
Okay. And then what is considered moderate income right now? Where is that falling?
Well, in the current code. In the current code, we defined moderate income as 80% of area median income for ownership housing and 60% of area median income for rental housing. That is a little bit different than the new state definitions and that's why we made some changes to that existing portion of the code to conform with the state definitions.
And is that the 50%?
No, 50%, but in the state definition is considered low. Very low and then 30% is extremely low.
Okay. And then I guess I have a really hard time supporting a half mile. And then, I guess I have a really hard time supporting a half-mile tran, uh, distance from a transit area. Only in that, now, where I live, we have parking permit. So our parking, in theory, is quite, you know, is already managed. We have problems with enforcing parking. We've got parking problems downtown. But I'm thinking of, if we have a half a mile, I, I'm all for having affordable rate, affordable housing that's a half a mile out from a transit area. If you're using multifamily tax exemptions, great. I start to worry about parking, because people with lower income, unless if they are disabled or very, very senior and they're less mobile, everybody needs cars pretty much about on the same level, regardless of income. And I feel as though, I feel as though that, um, I know the world is not a fair place. You know, we talk about equity, but it feels like if you have a low income, you don't qualify, you, you, your desire to have parking spots isn't as important as people who have a higher income. And so I have a really hard time, um, saying that for, people say, we put, we have multifamily zone going up to 28th, for example, right? Going west to 28th. And I think of a single parent who's got a couple of kids, and we're going to ask them to not have a car and to walk, or everybody get on a scooter to get down to the bus and, and, or they've got to go out into a neighborhood and park their car, because there's no parking at their, at their spot. I, it, it just, it, it just strikes me as, as an unfair treatment of people with a more limited income. To, uh, there's different ways to incentivize development, and I don't think putting people a half a mile away. Now, right now, I would have no problem walking a half a mile. But in a couple months, if I had littles, I would not be keen about walking a half a mile to get on the bus to go somewhere. So that, that's where I weigh in. I, I am, you know, the 38 spots for Lot A, perfect. Added height down 522, where we're not up against, um, uh, single-family homes, totally perfect, quarter mile, totally manageable. But I, I do have problems with reducing parking a half a mile away and what that impact, what that impact is for the people who live there and who live around there. And that, and that's my only comments and questions, so thank you.
Mayor, could I provide a little background on the half-mile and quarter-mile?
Please do.
So those numbers come from transit studies that have been done around, probably around the world, but at least around the country in the research that I've looked at. And they're, they're really a proxy for a, a time of walk to get to a certain point. So a quarter mile is roughly a five-minute walk with a standard pace, and a half mile is about a 10-minute walk. So that's the distance that people would walk for certain levels of transit service. The higher the level of transit service, the more frequent it is, the more reliable it is, the more likely they are to walk the 10 minutes versus five minutes. It's also based on the, the environment in which they're walking. So are there good sidewalks, is it safe? Or, you know, are there things to see and do along the way? Is it a continuous type of, of a walk? So just to keep in mind that those are really proxies for the amount of time you could, you would need to walk to a stop. And I raise that because it really, you, if you put that in the context of people that have a car versus don't have a car, it's really gonna be based on what they need. If they don't have a car, they will walk at least that 10 minutes and maybe longer if they're relying on transit to get around. And if they have a car, then it may be based on the, the ability, if they try to drive, you know, how, how easy is it to park in a particular area? Or what do they need to do afterwards? So if you keep it in that fuller context, the, the half-mile, I think, and what the Planning Commission was getting at, was it really encompasses a larger area for people that may be relying on transit in order to be able to use that, and encourage more people to use the transit so that they don't have to have a car. That's the other piece of this. And again, keep in mind, we're talking about three different types of housing here. There's the affordable, that the state law says a quarter mile, the commission is recommending, and the staff is supporting going to a half mile for that. The senior and disabled, which is a quarter mile under state law, and the commission and the staff are saying, keep that at a quarter mile because of mobility issues for those populations. And then the third being market rate housing, which, again, in the future, may include some of that affordable if that's what the analysis allows us to do. So it's, again, encouraging people that don't necessarily have a car or want a car to be able to use transit within that 10-minute walk.
Thank you for that extra explanation. All right, I have a couple of questions. So you were mentioning earlier that Arch would be assisting with the study. Is it, they do some work and then city staff does some work as well? Kind of a joint study?
They do most of the work on these, on those. They, they have the expertise, they've been doing this for a long time. We, we facilitate their, their work and their interface with, with the Planning Commission and Council.
All right, so it's, it's mostly, I hazard a guess at saying, you know, it's finding time in their workload. And so where we're providing the information, they do the crunching and the studying, and then come back and interact with our staff and Planning Commission. So, so it sounds like a lot of the heavy lifting is Arch, and we do a lot of the local, specific information and kind of the coordination.
Yes, that's correct.
But Arch is pretty busy on a consistent basis, so.
They are, and, and we have them busy on, right now, on Canyon Park. And, and after that, we have them queued up to work on our multifamily tax exemption code amendments. So, uh, so it's also, I think they're available to help us when we ask, but there's, there's a limit to how much, how many balls they can juggle at once.
They haven't told us no yet.
Well, that's good to hear. So as far as the parking requirements, you were mentioning, you know, one car per bedroom. Do studio apartments count as one bedroom? And so that'd be one parking spot, or is there some different classification for a studio?
We treat studios the same as one bedrooms, in terms of parking parts.
And then for the definition of the frequent transit stops, so when I was reading the packet before, it was a little confusing for me, because I didn't, I didn't see it as spelled out as clearly as I think you did during your presentation. So I think I'm feeling a lot more knowledgeable about that. So, so for the market, it's a, it's requiring a higher frequency, four times per hour by one line?
Correct.
And then for affordable, it goes down to two stops per hour?
Correct.
Okay, and is that by one line, or is that by multiple lines?
Multiple lines.
Okay, so it definitely opens that flexibility up for the affordable.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for your presentation.
You're most welcome.
All right. So is anyone, Councilmember Agnew?
I don't know if I'm gonna beat Councilmember Doer to this, but I was gonna recommend that we approve the proposed ordinance amending the BMC Chapter 12.07 Affordable Housing, 12.16 Parking, and 12.64 The Downtown Subarea Regulation.
I'm just gonna pause you on that real quick. Sounds like we did have a public comment that we wanted to accept for the public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we did have, as Mr. Boyd alluded to, we received two written comments that were, will be added as exhibits to tonight's, to the item. And that was from Pat Pierce and Diane Carlson, who is Capital Division Director for King County Metro. Also, we have Carsten Kerd from the Planning Commission on the line. And I don't know, he asked to speak under the public comment portion. Carsten, do you still have anything to add, or do you think you?
Thanks for the opportunity. I think, I think that the questions of the council were answered, so.
Great, thank you, and that's all we have.
All right, thank you very much, Councilmember Agnew. So, I'll look for a second. Councilmember Doer? Councilmember Doer?
Can I speak to the motion?
A little, let me go through my, yes. So we have Councilmember Agnew with the recommended action as the motion. We have Councilmember Doer as the second, and sounds like we have some discussion.
Well, I just wanted to speak to the motion. I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into this. I think this is really moving the needle. Obviously, a lot of it's pushed by state, state law. But I, I did want to mention that, I think that it's a rather big assumption to assume that everybody has a car, because if you're on the low-income spectrum, imagine if you don't have to have a car, and what that amount of money could go toward in terms of basic needs. And so I just, I just wanted to mention that, because I think we too often assume that maybe our lifestyle is the same as other people's lifestyles. And if you're a low-income person and you can live in a place where you have access to transit and don't have, to have a car, that's an enormous savings. And so I just wanted to mention that, because I think sometimes we forget that not everyone has the luxury of having cars and things that, that we assume we all do. And, and I just wanted to also thank the Planning Commission for being so thoughtful about the way they've approached this problem, and to staff for reacting and then putting thought into, okay, what can we get out of it? And I think we're all in favor of more affordable housing. With the coming eviction crisis, we no doubt will have plenty of people looking for affordable homes. And so I want to thank both staff and Planning Commission for their, their thoughts and their efforts toward this end. And I don't know if we need to make a, a motion to get it on the 2021 docket. I'm assuming that that message was received and will be at least getting, having consideration for when we'd like to see it. So that's all I wanted to say, thanks.
Thank you, any further discussion? All right, City Clerk?
Please say your name when I call your name. Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Yay.
Councilmember Thompson?
Aye.
Councilmember McNeil?
Yea.
Mayor Olson?
Yea.
Councilmember Doer?
Yea.
Councilmember Agnew?
Yea.
As a six-zero with Councilmember McNeil absent, I'm sorry, McCullough absent.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all, and thank you, Commissioner Kerd.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you all very much. All right, that closes our public hearing and takes us to the end of our agenda bills, our agenda items on here. So we have our council conversations up next. Councilmember Doer?
Hi, thanks. I, I wanted to bring up the Pat Pierce email. I didn't bring it up during the past conversation, because I didn't know, I thought it would kind of muddy the waters. But I was curious about this concept of requiring housing to have, have a mix of market rate, low-income, and senior, or I can't remember exactly what the email said. And I just wondered, um, I know we're not supposed to talk to staff, but I would like to throw out there that I'm interested in learning more about that concept, because I do, I, I think there is a point to be made about kind of segregating people into low-income, and only low-income live with low-income, and only seniors live with seniors, because I think society really benefits from all of us living in a diverse community where we're exposed to people that aren't the same as us and that might have different perspectives. And, you know, and then there's a whole mix of interacting with seniors. Like, my, my kids don't have, they have one grandparent, but imagine if, you know, they lived in a place where they were exposed to lots of different potential grandparents. And so I, I don't know if anyone else is interested. I just thought I'd bring it up, because I, it's an interesting concept to me, and I'd be interested in learning if there are barriers to that happening in Baltimore, or if that's something that we could look into.
Councilmember Agnew?
I too would be interested in that. Seems like sometimes the Germans come up with some pretty good ideas. We need to follow as many as we can, but I truly would like to see us look into that also.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
No, I, well, this is not to be disparaging Councilmember Agnew, but every time somebody says, "In Europe, they," I'm like, oh my word, they are not the gold standard. However, I like that idea a lot. I like that idea a lot. And some people threw, some people throw it around like it's, you know, the ultimate authority, and you're, you're not implying that, I know that. But yes, and the one thing that I do like that we have existing in our code right now, it, and I, and it was also in our agenda bill, is the notion that those, those affordable units are interspersed. I've mentioned in the past, back when my daughter was dancing in Bellevue, there was a family that lived, and I'm just forgetting it, it starts with an M, big expensive condo units in Bellevue. It doesn't matter where you live in it. I'll think about it once I'm, once we're done here. But it didn't, you had to be high-income to live anywhere in there, but the higher the income, the higher up that you, the higher up in this building that you live. Oh, Braverman, it's Braverman, can I say that? Eric, this mom was saying, yeah, we, we, we live in one of the lower units, and the people who live up on the top units, they don't talk to us when we're in the elevator, because, you know, we're getting off on a lower floor. So snobbery knows no income, even when you can afford a unit. But I do like that we have now, affordable units are mixed up. But being more purposeful about it is, is very intriguing. And I don't know how we encourage that to happen. My, my children have grown up purposely in, around multi-ethnic and multi-age, people as neighbors, and, and you're right, it makes it very, very rich. Grandma Audrey will always be Grandma Audrey to my kids. So, yeah, I would love to explore that some more.
Yeah, I agree, it's come up in previous discussions and just with the stratification. And I think if there's some mechanism or some language that we can do just to encourage it and possibly even require it, I think that would be something great to look into. So I have another topic, Terry Ryan, you may remember him. So he's the Aerospace Economic Development Director. So he reached out to me, and Boeing announced that they were gonna do a study to see if they should consolidate the 787 line into one manufacturing facility, which, when I read between the lines, is, is it may not be in Snohomish County, it may be somewhere else in the country. And so they created a Snohomish County Aerospace Task Force to respond. to respond to Boeing's announcement. And Terry was saying that he was looking to do a, a positive, you know, say how much, you know, that Snohomish County and reg, and the region appreciates Boeing. And he's looking for the city's support to use our logo on a, a letter from Executive Summers, reaching out to Boeing and saying, you know, touting the benefits of Snohomish County. That's Boeing's been a good partner and we didn't enjoy, you know, maintaining that relationship through moving forward. So I just wanted to bring it to the council to see if, if anyone has any issues with us signing on to it. I'll just say that Arlington, Edmonds, Everett, Lake Stephens, Lynwood and Marysville and Mount Lake Terrace have already agreed. So. Councilmember Agnew?
Yeah, I wouldn't be opposed to that at all. I think if we can try to keep Boeing and Everett, that's gonna benefit us just as much as anyone else.
Deputy Mayor Zornz?
Um, I come from a long family and they have a phrase, I don't know if they still use it, but if it's not Boeing, we're not going. And yeah, no, put our names on it. And also as an aside is, my son, it works for a company down in San Francisco and they're talking about leaving San Francisco and coming, leaving the state. And I'm sure our city and many other cities are thinking, how do we lure them here? But it's definitely something that we all ought to have our antenna out is that companies are looking to simplify, simplify their lives. And I think Bothell would be a place to encourage people to come. But yes, put our name on that letter.
Councilmember Doer?
I agree. I think we should definitely sign on. Boeing's such a huge, huge piece of the economic puzzle here in recovery from COVID. So anything that we can do to encourage them to stay and continue investing in our state is really important.
Councilmember Thompson?
Agree with all of that, all that everybody said. No problem with putting our name on that at all.
Great. Thank you very much. I'll, I'll work with Terry and our staff to get that information to what he needs. Any other topics? Not too much. Looking pretty quiet. All right, motion to adjourn then? Someone wouldn't. All right, Councilmember Doer?
I'd like to move that we adjourn.
All right, Councilmember Agnew?
Okay.
All right, everybody in favor? Thumbs up. All right. Thanks. Hope you get home safe, Mason.
Everyone.
Good night, everybody.